Good morning and welcome to the March 14th County Commission. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and reminder to silence your cell phones and meeting documents are available next to Commissioner Bender and Carol will help you with a listening device. With that, we'll go into routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion on a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections, changes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission meeting minutes of March 7th.
Second.
A motion on a second to approve the March 7th minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item three is to pay the bills of $3,707,119.21.
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion on a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
Mr. Chair, as is often the case these days, this includes 2.8 million going to the South Dakota Department of Revenue for revenues we collected. But one noteworthy thing I think today is that we had something like 14 legal bills to outside attorneys from the court system, some for over $2,000. And I don't know that I remember another time with so many large bills.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? We have a motion on a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Reports, we have Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for February, the sheriff's report for February, and the auditor's account of the county treasurer's balances as of February 28th. Those will all be filed. Item five is personnel actions. The first item is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
A motion on a second for routine actions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a special commission action to approve the proposed updated language to Minnehaha County recruitment procedures to clarify jail over hires. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm here before you today to make a request to update our recruitment procedures. There's an area of those procedures that gives exceptions to when we can have or employ more than one person in one slotted FTE. What we're asking for is your approval on one of those exceptions. Currently, there's an exception that references a staffing plan that was agreed to between the sheriff and the commission for over hires in that area. We all understand what that staffing plan meant was three extracurricular officers, but we would like to include that actually in the procedures and move that amount up to six. The reason we're requesting your approval has to do with the sizes of training classes and making sure that we're staffed at an appropriate level. So we're just asking for that minor change in those recruitment procedures today. And Warden Gromer is here as well if you have any questions for either of us.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Carrie or Warden Gromer?
Mr. Chairman, our HR Director is why I move that we allow this.
Second.
Well, I guess I have an open floor here.
I think that was a compliment. I don't believe there's any questions. All those, do we have a motion?
Yep, Jeff did.
Jeff did, okay. And a second? I wasn't listening, I was passing stuff. We have a motion on a second to approve the change in the language. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing a good job.
Wise.
And being wise besides. There's no applications for abatement, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, no petitions for compromise. So we're at opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any public comments to make that is not an agenda item, no one's moving, so we'll go to the regular business. Item 10 is to consider a motion to issue the annual proclamation recognizing March 18th as St. Patrick's Day for Minnehaha County. Good morning.
Morning.
Justin, you need to give us your name and address and all that good stuff.
Justin Bentis, Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, 230 South Phillips Avenue, Sioux Falls. I believe I'm here to accept annual proclamation recognizing March 18th as St. Patrick's Day. As you all know, the St. Patrick's Day parade starts on Saturday, March 18th at 11:00 a.m. with the painting of the Shamrock. The parade officially starts at 2:00 p.m. and buttons are available at this Area Chamber of Commerce for $3.
Perfect. It's always a good event and I think Mr. Barth is going to be part of the...
I'm such a sucker.
...process. I'm sure it has something to do with green beer, but that's beside the point. Do you want to read the proclamation this morning?
Yep. Whereas we be Irishmen and women, all this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and in the homelands throughout the world, and whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us all of our shared heritage and membership in a global family, and whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland of his great message of love and peace to one another, and whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage in music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in a toast, and whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer and a wearing of the green, and then this we proclaim as leprechauns we are dancing in the joy that's airware, with luck as your companion, from deep in our hearts we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another, and thank God for the Irish who give us St. Pat to bring us together a wearing a green hat and then shout and proclaim for the whole world is Irish on the 18th Oh March.
Thank you, Justin.
Well done.
Mr. Barth, do you have a Oh comment?
I would move approval of this resolution, Chairman O'Benega.
I would Oh second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for St. Patrick's Day on March 18th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 is to consider a motion to approve the resolution to set speed limits on County Highway 137 at a location south of Crooks within Minnehaha County. D.J. Boothey.
Morning Commissioners, D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Shannon is out sick today. He was going to present this originally, but you're stuck with me. So, we were contacted by the city of Crooks a few months ago about the speed limit just south of the municipal limits, and they had originally signed as a 25 mile per hour speed limit south of town, and there was no resolution as required by state law on the books with their county commission. And so, we performed a engineering analysis and speed study for that section of roadway and came up with a recommendation, recommendation on County Highway 137 for a 45 mile per hour speed zone, starting at the southern end of city limits extending approximately 1,440 feet to the south, and then it will go to 25 miles per hour inside the city limits. We met with Crooks and discussed the results of this speed study. They do agree with the recommendation, and so asking you for your approval on the proposed resolution for this new speed limit on Highway 137 south of Crooks.
Thank you, D.J. Does anyone have any questions for him or Commissioner Karski?
So, just so I'm clear, it started out with them requesting 25 and now we're going to be at 45. And they're okay with that?
That's correct, yep. They have a 25 mile per hour existing speed zone and they wanted to extend that to the south. It was already signed as, I believe, a 35, a 25 for a portion of it and then 35 south of that, and so then we performed the engineering study and ran it through some federal highway software, and that's how we came up with the recommendation of 45 miles per hour.
So they did ask for 25, we settled at 45 and they're good with it?
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Heberger?
I would just say that somebody who lives out there, I was really glad to see this happen because it didn't make any sense to have 25 on that last, there's nothing there.
Right.
So it didn't make any, there's a very nice long level where it's 25, that's understandable, but where it was continued to, it just didn't make any sense. So I'm glad to see there was a study done and it's done accurately this time.
Good.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion on a second to approve the speed limits on County Highway 137. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12 is to consider a recommendation for bid awards for various materials for the Highway Department annual material bid letting. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, on March 8th, we opened bids for the annual materials letting, and this year we had five proposals that we had asked for bids on. We received bids on four of them. We should note that on the one that we did not receive bids for, we typically receive one bid on that item. It's for oil, for our asphalt paving process, and the lone bidder that we typically see was out of town at a conference and kind of forgot about the bid. And so, we are able to work around that and purchase less than $25,000, the statutory purchasing limit, and we'll be able to get through this summer without any problems. The bids that we did receive on the four proposals, the first one is hot mix asphalt. Our asphalt bid came in pretty close to where we were last year. Last year, we were at $46.05 per ton. This year, concrete materials again is our low bidder at $46.40 per ton, and so we're really happy about that. Snow plow motor grade, greater blade cutting edges, the cutting edges that we put on the edge of our plows. Titan machinery is a low bidder on that. Abrasive and salt mixture or salt sand, concrete materials is the low bidder on that again, and rock salt and transportation, black strap ink is the low bidder on that one too again. So, a lot of the same vendors that we've worked with in the past are the low bidders again. A rock salt is pretty comparable to where we were last year again. It's about a dollar per ton cheaper, and that price can fluctuate throughout the course of the year because it's, there's a portion of that bid that's based off of the fuel price. So, today we're asking for your approval of the awards for proposals two, three, four, and five. And if you have any questions, I can answer those here at this time.
Any questions for D.J.? Just a clarification if I could, Kirsten, when we don't receive a bid and it's less than 25,000, there's any concerns with that?
Nope, not at all. We have discretion with supplies up to $25,000 statutory limit to basically go out and purchase. We do our best to solicit, you know, different prices, but it's not subject to the formal bidding process at your discretion, so no concerns.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on a second to approve the bid awards for the various materials in the Highway Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 13 is to consider a resolution to participate in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program.
Commissioners, the U.S. Federal Highway Administration requires that bridges are inspected every two years typically. Box culverts can be inspected every four years, and then certain structures that are in really bad shape, they have to be inspected every 12 months. To comply with that inspection requirement, the state of South Dakota administers a bridge inspection program with the counties and municipalities, and they negotiate contracts with engineering consultants that are allowed to inspect these bridges, and then they work with the counties and the municipalities to ensure that those inspections are completed at the appropriate times. They have a two-step process for those inspections to be completed. The first step is to execute a resolution requesting to work with a certain consultant of your choice, and then the DOT will begin negotiations with that consultant, and then the second step is to approve of a contract between the state and the consultant once they've negotiated that contract. And so, this is step one. We've worked with Banner Associates in the past, they've done an excellent job, and so this is a request for an approval of a resolution to again work with Banner Associates. The state will take this resolution and then negotiate the contract with Banner. We've been inspecting about half of our bridges every year, and so we maintain a consistent number of bridge inspections every year, and we don't get overloaded every other year. So, with that, we request your approval of the resolution for 2017 bridge inspections with Banner Associates.
Thank you, D.J. Questions, Commissioner Barth?
D.J., obviously, this is a good deal for us. Do all counties follow the federal guidelines and inspect their bridges, and if so, do they all sign an agreement with the state, or do they fly under the radar?
I have to make some assumptions to answer your question. I would assume that all counties are following the National Federal Highway Administration requirements. I would be surprised if there was somebody that wasn't following it. Again, I would also assume that everybody is working with the state inspection program and not doing it on their own. In other states, there are a lot of counties that do it on their own because they may have staff in-house or they may work directly with a consultant. The benefit that we have in South Dakota to working with the state is that the state actually pays 80% of the inspection cost, and so we only pay 20% of the inspection cost.
Other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion on a second to approve the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 14 is to consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's department to purchase six Ford utility interceptors from Mitchell Motor Cars Doing Business as Vern ID Ford at a total cost of $177,954. This is competitively bid with the city of Sioux Falls, Lieutenant Bosman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lieutenant Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. What I have for you this morning is requesting authorization to purchase six Ford utility interceptors. It's the Ford Explorer version of the police vehicle that we are looking to buy. It's something we had budgeted for already for this year to be purchased. We are piggybacking off of the city of Sioux Falls bid, which they have competitively awarded to Mitchell Motor Cars Doing Business as Vern ID Ford. The base price, as long as the options that we are requiring for the vehicle are listed on the sheet for a total price of $177,954.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Karski?
We're going to be driving through Mitchell later today on our way to Pierre. Could we pick one up and bring it back?
One of the questions, the bid was awarded with the dealer to deliver at his cost, so we'll, but I appreciate the offer.
I think I'd let Karski have one, but I wouldn't let Barth take one. We have a motion and a second?
You don't. I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the sheriff's department to purchase the six Ford utility interceptors from the Mitchell Motor Cars for $177,954. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, Sioux Falls Thrive, Candy Hanson.
Wow. Good morning, Commissioners.
We'll make you come to the front if you don't mind and speak to the microphone, and you have to give us your name and address even if, we all know who you are.
Okay. I'm Candy Hanson. I live in Sioux Falls at 2212 East 54th Street.
Welcome.
Yeah, it's good to be here. Very good to be here. I'm assuming I can just do, oops, okay. Press the arrow key down. Okay. Okay, so I'm here to give you a briefing on Sioux Falls Thrive is probably one of the newest nonprofits in Sioux Falls, and I'm going to give you a little bit of background information on how it came to be. You all know about Sioux Falls tomorrow because the county is a participant in that. Every 10 years, we bring together a group, a cross-section of the community, and really come up with the people's voice or the people's desires and aspirations for what the Sioux Falls area will look like in 10 years. When we do that, we start by polling the community, and in 2014, we had actually over 2,600 people respond, both electronically and on paper printed ballots in the newspapers. I compiled those data, and a couple of things really surprised me. There's always a section where people can talk about anything that they want to, and the first thing that surprised me were the number of people who actually said that they believed Sioux Falls was turning into a low-wage community. And I kind of wrote that down, and I was also surprised by the number of people that wrote in about diversity because about half of them said, isn't it great? We should celebrate the change in diversity in the community, and the other half were saying they weren't so sure about this whole thing. They thought maybe that was an issue. All of these data go back to five different working groups, and they do some of their own interviewing and polling too. So when the education group came back with its strategy, they addressed the fact that they thought there were a heck of a lot of low-income children in the community that were going to be held back in their educational success because their families didn't have the resources necessary to support the child as they move through. So I took that with a grain of salt, and then of course, the next year Forward Sioux Falls started, which happens every five years, and I know the commission supports that too. And this year, the business community was going, we've got workforce issues, we've got workforce issues. So they brought in Market Street Services from Atlanta, and Market Street Services will do a comparative study of Sioux Falls against eight other communities, including Des Moines, Omaha, Fargo. And they looked at our workforce issue and they said, you know, we don't really think you've got a problem. We know that you're not real pleased that your unemployment is below 2%, but the truth is, your average worker is 34.5 years of age, and as people retire, you have a pipeline to replace them. But they said, if you look ahead about 12 to 15 years, we think you have a serious issue. And they started repeating what the people had said. You've got an increasingly low-income population, kids coming from families that do not have the means to support them as they move through their educational career. So, when the initiatives came out for Forward Sioux Falls, there were 11 of them. They adopted these four for the first year. The first three that you see up there are very typical activities of the chamber and the development foundation. The fourth was something that they knew they wanted to do something about but didn't have a home for. At that time, since I was a senior advisor for the community foundation, it moved to my desk. So I started doing my research, and I found out that this graph that you see up there is a depiction of a cradle-to-career continuum. It begins with pre-kindergarten readiness. That's the first time we have all the kids in one group, and we can see how prepared they are to start school. And at the far end, it ends with post-secondary degree completion. So when you start looking into this, you find out that if you look at that second dot there, that early grade reading, if a child by the age of eight or nine in third grade is not reading at grade level, the odds of that child graduating high school drop by 40%. When you look ahead to the next dot, the middle-grade math, you'll find out that if a child is not proficient in math, and that's up to Algebra I, which is considered the gateway to future academic, scientific, and math studies, if either one of those things is not true, the odds of that child graduating high school drop by 75%. And those are, that's empirical data. So clearly, if you can't get kids to high school graduation, you've threatened the workforce far into the future, especially when you're looking at Sioux Falls that wants this high-tech biomedical gosh knows what. But you gotta have people even in the tech area, or you're not going to have plumbers and carpenters and the people that need to put our basic infrastructure together. Now, the interesting thing about cradle-to-career is that it doesn't really focus on what's going on in the classroom, because a child going to school who's from a poor family, and whether that family got here last year or has been here for three generations, will be in school in a mainstream society for a few hours a day, three quarters of the year, and the rest of their time is spent outside in the community. So cradle-to-career looks at what's happening to the child outside of the classroom. They gave me two models to look at, the first one called Strive Together and the other alignment Nashville. When I went to the Strive Together site, I was really surprised to find this map. You'll see that there are 69 different communities involved in this network, but look there in the central states and particularly at South Dakota, absolutely nothing happening. It surprised me for a while until I realized that those were the states that were least affected by the Great Recession, and that most of these programs started on the heels of the Great Recession. The other thing, of course, is that our demographic changes have not been as obvious in the Sioux Falls area as they are in other parts of the country. We're still 88% majority white, but if you look at our high school graduating class last year, it was 69% majority white, and our kindergarten class was 59% majority white. So the demographic change that's occurring in Sioux Falls is occurring with our short little people that are coming through the educational system. Now, when I looked at Alignment Nashville, that is one that has been around perhaps the longest, that in Cincinnati. I really like the Alignment Nashville model. It is an urban area, but when they look at working on that ecosystem around the school, they're looking at those four quadrants, the family engagement, the career readiness, health and wellness, social services. In the first 10 years that they began tracking their data against that continuum, their high school graduation rate improved from 62 to 82% by working outside the classroom in the community around the schools. A few years later, they started in on health and wellness, and remember, this is an urban school situation. Their teen pregnancy rate dropped from about 43% to 16%. And you know that a young woman who has a child in junior high or high school is, the odds of that person being able to support that family into the future drop dramatically. So I really like the Alignment Nashville model for a lot of reasons. They actually have 15 alignment teams. I wish I could have stolen that word, and you'll know why in a minute, but I thought I might be borrowing a little too much. Anyway, looking at that, I also found out that these activities are grouped around something called collective impact. Harvard Business Review did a big study on collective impact. They're saying that 150 communities in the United States are looking at something like this, and it's pretty different from what we typically encounter in Sioux Falls. One thing that's good is that it's based on collaboration, and we have a very collaborative community, but it's collaboration on steroids because collective impact makes an initial assumption that if you get a group together, you're not trying to figure out what other program you need or what needs to be expanded. You're trying to look at your community and say, this is a generous community, there are tons of programs and services out there to support these families, but they're not in any kind of system. They're just siloed, and because they're siloed, you don't get the bang for the buck. You're not getting the return on investment that local government, nonprofits, and donors are making. And it also assumes that you, when you begin problem solving, would not just bring a few agencies together and maybe a few of their board members. You must bring in government, business, nonprofits, faith-based community when you set up these alignment teams, or as I call them, action teams. And it brings a new set of tools to the table, because when you start problem solving on complex systems and trying to bring a lot of programs into alignment, you need a different set of problem tools. Thrive will be using something called Baldridge Performance Criteria and Continuous Quality Improvement. Both of these were adopted by the Business Community Healthcare Services in the 80s and 90s. Somehow, the toolbox never made it out to community problems. Somehow, the toolbox never made it out to community problem-solving. Now, there are five conditions for collective impact. And that, you know, begins with bringing people together around a common agenda. Our agenda is to, you know, help get these kids through successfully. There's a lot of dependence on data. Collective impact is very data-driven. You've got the continuum. If you're working to try and prove things, you better darn well believe you've been able to change. For example, the graduation rate. Um, there's, the differential approaches in a joint plan of action. But the continuous communication, bringing everybody you can into this communication loop is important. And then, of course, backbone support. And that's what Thrive is. It's backbone support. Thrive is not here to tell people what to do to fix it. Thrive is here to bring the right people to the table so that they can figure out how to fix it. So all of it sounded pretty good, but um, you know, so that's Nashville or that's Thrive Together. What does that mean for Sioux Falls? Is there really potential here for doing it? So the Community Foundation, um, the United Way, the Chamber and Development Foundation got together and decided to do a pilot project. One of the things, remember, we need is a central hub for measurement and data collection. So we went to Augustana University and we gave them three possible subjects to um, do a pilot project research on. Um, they wound up taking affordable housing for a couple of reasons. Uh, the first reason is that there were more than nine hundred children in our school district last year who were technically homeless at some point during the year. The second reason is that it's again, an area where there are lots of charitable, private and public dollars being plowed into trying to provide affordable housing and not getting a bang for the buck. So the people were very excited about helping Augie with their study. The study was conducted um, by Suzanne Smith. She's a doctoral candidate. Fortunately, she hadn't chosen her dissertation topic. Um, so she was very excited about seeing maybe this had potential for her. And in January, released the results of those study, which you can find online at the SiouxFallsThrive.org site. But here are a couple of things that we learned. First of all, what people were trying to tell us in twenty-fourteen in the Sioux Falls Tomorrow Survey was true. There is increasing incoming quality in Sioux Falls. If you look on the left-hand side of that slide, you'll see that the number of families living at or below twenty-five thousand dollars a year is increasing. Now, the orange uh, column is the MSA. The blue column is Sioux Falls proper. Now, you look to the far-right end and it looks pretty exciting. We had nearly six thousand families that moved into a hundred thousand dollar-plus income level in that seven-year period of time. But the sad part is right in the middle. If you look at the dip at the fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range, that's the sweet spot for middle-income in our community. It's estimated that it costs a family of four fifty-nine thousand dollars a year to be middle-class in Sioux Falls. So um, that was not really happy news. And it did mimic what the people were trying to tell us. Um, Suzanne also looked at change in just the number of children in the community over that uh, five-year period of time. And you see the number of children increasing by about thirteen percent. But the number living in poverty now at, increasing at the rate of forty-eight percent. And that's a well-established trend. That's not just a bloop. Now, I told you when we do collective impact, we take different sets of tools to the table. And I gave Augustana a couple of things. I said, you've gotta use this because we're going to be using these tools again. And one of the things I asked Suzanne to answer, which was odd for me to ask since I was at a grant-making agency for fifteen years at that point, was how many agencies are there in Sioux Falls that are actually providing housing services? I want you to take this tool called actor mapping and apply it to this issue. And Suzanne walked into my office with this. Now, if you could see this spider web, some people call it a spaghetti plate. I think maybe spaghetti plate's better. You'll see that there are twenty-eight agencies that provide direct services for some kind of housing in Sioux Falls. And about eighty-one that are trying to help and are referring in and out of it. Um, but again, it's a perfect illustration of what collective impact is all about. We are program-rich. There are plenty of dollars going into plenty of programs and services. But we're not getting a bang for the buck because there's no system. I kind of laughed when I saw this. I said to Suzanne, you know, I think you just proved my point. And I wanted to know whether there was potential in Sioux Falls. And I can see that there is, but this is useless. Give me something that makes sense to me. So she came into my office with this. And I admit that GPS needed is my header. That's not hers. If, uh, you could see at the bottom, those are all of the limiting factors for families trying to find affordable housing. Some are quite obvious. They don't have enough money. They're paying fifty to sixty percent of their income in rent. Um, some of them result from the fact that um, uh, the state has an institution on a hill here. And when people are released from that institution, they're limited in the kind of housing they can find because many uh, areas have been set up as crime-free zones. And many of them will not be able to get any federal benefits if they've been convicted of a felony. But if you could see all of those things, then as you move up that first era, era, arrow, you're going through all the agencies you might have to go through. And then, over to the right. Now, I came out the other end of the continuum, right? I don't wanna figure this out. It's not that I can't figure it out, but I sure don't wanna figure it out. And then I imagine myself in the majority of the poor with children in this community, which are women and children. And believe me, the majority of those are employed. We're at less than two percent unemployment. And trying to figure out how to navigate this, um, when I'm working during the day, coming home to the kids and the agencies are not there to answer my questions. Then I imagine myself that same mom, um, who, um, for whom English is not a first language or even Spanish is not a first language. Or on top of that, I don't have a high school education. So you can see what families are faced with if they attempt to use, uh, the services that are there for them. One of the other things that's required when we take this Baldridge approach to community problem-solving is that when we plan, we must consult with the consumer, the ultimate customers. So Suzanne did a series of three-focus groups with the agencies and community leaders and a set of three with people who were eligible for services or already using affordable housing. And by and large, the two groups or the six groups all agreed. But this is what the client said. Fundamentally, there was no real clear pathway into any system. And so people just get somebody to drive them or get on the bus and go looking for rent signs. So um, we thought we had pretty much determined that if this is true about housing, there's probably a lot of other issues in Sioux Falls that are like that. So we started setting up the uh, structure for Sioux Falls Thrive. Beginning with the mission statement, which says that we're here to make sure that all children thrive and achieve their optimal uh, educational and career potential. And that means that they're going to need the re, need the resources, access to resources they need for that stable family living situation. We um, came into existence, actually, according to Chantel Krebs, on January ninth. And this is my first Board of Directors. You probably recognize some of these people. Uh, one of the requirements is that they cannot be in politics and that they are influential because they've earned that by their leadership to other community organizations. And I won't go through their names. I'm sure you recognize most of them. Now, they're there to run the organization and to govern. But they're going to need help when they do that. In this chart, you'll see a depiction of Thrive. At the top, you see the four different organizations that are the founding sponsors, the ones that did the pilot project, United Way Community Foundation, Development Foundation, and Chamber. And then they're pointing the Sioux Falls Thrive Board of Directors. I'm sorry that brick color doesn't show up much, but that's a Strategy Council. And the Strategy Council is really the workhorse of this endeavor because they're going to be the ones that are actually figuring out what we're going to target. The big circle in the middle shows the communication network that's necessary to set up. At the base, you see Augustana Research, which will be the data hub, collecting the data, doing the measurement and telling us how successful, successful we've been. Into the center, you see the Action Team um, circles. We have one right now that's just forming. That's on housing. As I said, um, Nashville ended up with fifteen over time. On the very edges, you see something called Engagement Collaboratives. Those are small, really hopeful, great projects going on in Sioux Falls, but they're not system-focused. They're more at the program level. Um, for example, we have Hope Coalition, uh, Randall Beck and Doug Morrison, working from a faith-based perspective to create three new preschools for children and near Title I schools who do not have access to preschool at this time. But we wanna keep those groups within the network and communicate because this is a community-wide effort. This is another um, depiction of those groups with uh, and what they'll be doing. Um, and I think um, uh, the Action Team is where we're focused now. They'll be appointed by the Strategy Council. Very interestingly, as I've gone out and given this um, presentation, I've had so many people come up and say, oh, can I be on it? Can I be on it? That we're gonna have more people that really think they want to serve on it. So we're probably going to have to do an application to keep that group down to a manageable size of maybe fifteen to twenty people. And the Strategy Council will be um, helping us figure that out. Um, that, that'll be their first job when they meet later this month, is getting out that application for the Action Team. Now, as time goes on, um, what Thrive is actually supporting, besides, you know, running the board and running the council, is are the Action Teams. And what they're going to get from us is professional facilitation and backup from Augustana Research Institute. So a lot of times when you try and do something like this, what you really need is the glue that holds it together. Again, that's why Thrive is called a backbone organization. We're hoping that over time, with two years of professional facilitation and support from Augie, the Action Teams will be self-sustaining. They will, they will have learned the toolbox. They'll have been learning the processes that we're using and can go on. Um, again, they'll never lose the support from the tracking and monitoring of Augustana Research. But um, we're hoping that they will spin off into self-sustaining teams within a two-year period of time. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is Thrive.
Wow. That's uh, incredible amount of information. But more importantly, when you give us some of those statistics, those are shattering of some of our concepts, I guess, of what we think is happening versus what really is happening.
Yeah. And, and I, I think, you know, I've got to, I, that's why we're so intent on keeping the relationship with Augie. Because um, you know, all of us do little bits of research like this. But when they go out, they can look at everybody and get, pull the information from the county, from the city, whatever. And that means when that Action Team comes in, probably next month, they're gonna have all the up-to-date research they need to start running. Um, and I think that that's going to be critical to the next one, too. I don't know what the Strategy Council will recommend as the next major study. I think we'll have one done again by the end of the year. We're trying to just fold this out as quickly as we can without getting mired down. Um, a lot of people have suggested it should be feeding. Because again, you know, when you think about how many food programs we have in Sioux Falls, it's program-rich and system-poor. And, you know, beginning, the county would have a role in that. Um, so a lot of people have suggested food. Uh, I don't know. They'll have, they'll look at the whole landscape before they make their recommendation.
See, would any questions or comments for Candy at this point?
I guess, I've heard this presentation now a couple of times and I learn something every, every time I hear it. And so I'm curious, just um, because when your system, when you're program-rich and, and system-poor, then, you know, it's the whole herding cats, kind of trying to get people to work together. So can you help, help me visualize, like, what do you see happening next with addressing the housing issue that you guys have already studied?
As I said, the Strategy Council will approve, approve an application process. Um, we took that from Nashville. Uh, originally, I thought, well, we just let people volunteer. Then I realized we'd have too many people. And then, um, I thought, well, they could just go appoint people. And I thought, well, what if we appointed people who didn't wanna be there and who really weren't supportive of this? So that's how we went with the application process. And what I see happening with that is a group of people that are very interested in untangling that pile of spaghetti and turning it into some kind of roadmap for housing um, to be able to work with the facilitator and figure that out. Um, and you look like I'm not answering your question.
Oh, no, that's okay. I mean, you're, you're heading in the right direction. I just, I mean, I'm, so I'm trying to figure out, so the roadmap is the roadmap for the end user, so the person can actually find housing? Is it to help people who want to provide more housing, figure out where to build it and how to?
The Action, the Action Team have been charged by the Board to start with kids. And the theory there is if you can untangle the system for kids, you're untangling it for everybody else. As time goes on, I suspect once that system is in place, the Action Team will turn its attention to how to expand availability of affordable housing. But they're not allowed to do that until they figure out a system. Otherwise, they're just sitting there and saying, we need more housing. We need more housing. What are we gonna do? So I think it's a reality check on, on the way we normally collaborate. That's why I say it's collaboration on steroids. We're going to make people go in a little box and figure out a system before they start saying, we need more, you should do this, or, does that make sense?
Yes, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. The whole idea too, of, I'll go on with a little bit about the collaboration. You know, there's a fabulous project going on in Sioux Falls now that you may be aware of called the Sioux Empire Network of Care. And that leadership came from Helpline. Helpline went out um, and um, brought together, invited, I think it was forty different social services agencies to come together to help them figure out a technological solution to families who were falling through gaps in services. You go here for, you go to uh, St. Francis House for something, you get referred to Dakota, uh, VOA Dakotas, and then you fall out. They invited forty together. I think my stats are right. Between twelve and fourteen said yes, they would like to collaborate. So they got the volunteers, the people that made sense. Then when it got down to actually testing the software solution, there were around five or six, okay? And there are some bumps there because you're talking about HIPAA and all kinds of information you can hold and can't hold and must be kept confidential. Now that system has proved to be, that it's gonna work and the other agencies are asking whether they can join. So I think that's gonna be very typical in this. You've got to start with your volunteers, people who really believe that you can make a significant difference if you work at this and this way. And if it flips and goes the right direction, I think the community support just grows.
Commissioner Hebert?
Just kind of a comment. And as I flipped through this at home before we came today and I was just struck so much by your spider web of systems and stuff. And I think we were probably all aware of that, but that's like way more than you would even expect. And ours is so small, I couldn't see what they were. But to know that all those are just specifically housing is even more alarming to think that we've got all those.
About twenty-eight are directly related to housing. The rest of them are feeding into that system. We're trying to help clients get into that system.
And then you think about, we've got nonprofits and we've got religious organizations. And we've got private entities. And to try to get them all to work together is gonna be hard. And when you get it done, it will be amazing, but it is gonna be a huge lift. And, and like you said, I see moving forward as, like you say, maybe the feeding side of it. I'm thinking the mental health side of it and, and just trying to navigate different systems in the city of Sioux Falls, which we do have great services, but as your average person, where do you even begin? So this is wonderful. It was great before you even gave it and I just looked at it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The issue of where to look is always a concern and a problem. The issue of where to look is always a concern and a problem, because as Candy's indicated, there are a lot of programs, but sometimes the system is so complicated to follow that they don't take those first couple of steps. One of the things that I've heard people talk about recently, again, is the whole workforce development-related issue, and how that's been an initiative for a number of years, and there's been a lot of time and effort and money spent on that, without question, but we haven't made any huge progressive steps in the results. And I think the last time I heard the statistics, there's like forty-some agencies that are involved in workforce development. How do you pick and choose where you're going to go? And that's an issue. And when I look at, and I haven't seen this before until it was passed over, but when you talk about the GPS needed, at the very bottom of this, and this should strike us all as county commissioners, but five indicators of factors and support services needed, and one of them obviously is criminal background issues, poor and rental housing history, which is not a surprise, and then the mental illness and substance abuse. I mean, those are all part of, major part of our budget. So somehow, we need to be part of the solution rather than just solving the problem.
And you know, Carrie Benz was appointed to the council, so she'll be at the table, and we're going to really be interested in what, how we can connect with the triage program, because it, yeah, really super important.
I think Commissioner Karski is also in that group, correct?
Yes, and I was involved with the, basically, the maybe conception of Thrive back with that workforce that goes back a couple of years now.
Yep, with the strategic workforce agenda, yeah.
When you said forty percent of the eight-year-olds and nine-year-olds that aren't reading at the correct level.
Will drop out.
Will drop out.
Right.
That is shocking to me, absolutely shocking.
And it's clear, we can't afford to have a community twelve years from now with that many dropouts. I mean, it's just not, what are they going to do with their time? I don't even want to think about it.
No.
That's right. So.
That's, I, that's hitting too close to home.
I guess the, maybe one comment on this is, you know, obviously, our community has a lot of concern for all these diverse issues, with all, whether it be education, homelessness, whatever it may be, because of all the willingness to create these entities, bringing them together is going to be the interesting part, but I think it can be done, and I'm, I'm hopeful and optimistic. So I, just based on the fact that our community is willing to, you know, all these different people are willing to recognize the problem, no, no, let's just bring it together.
Yeah, I, we have a great asset in that we are collaborative. I know agencies compete a little, but at heart, you know, we are collaborative, and that's the stepping stone. We're just going to bring a little more sophisticated toolbox to the table and make sure that we have good cross-section representation when we get into these community problem-solving activities.
Other comments? You have a huge task, and frankly, I'm in awe of the fact that you have the group to put that together and make it work.
Hey, this is Sioux Falls, we can do it. We can do it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Item sixteen is County Commissioner liaison reports. Any liaison reports, Commissioner Karski?
I met with DJ yesterday, talked a little bit about contracts. Our original budget was for about eleven million dollars of work, highway work in the county. We've awarded six million dollars in contracts to date, which is about, and we've saved about a million dollars over the initial estimate of where we thought we would be. But that still leaves us with, with about five million that has not yet been bid. Most of that is probably going to be carried over just because of, oh, I don't know if you want to call it competing or conflicting, other work being done by the state and federal government, where we just can't have roads that, you know, parallel roads shut off and with detours and that type of thing. So the, you know, work still needs to be done, but it's just more of a coordination effort, so probably going to see some carryover in the budget there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And as much as DJ's still here, I wonder if I could ask him a question on the carryover stuff.
Sure.
DJ, you know, I think last year, didn't we replace like nine bridges?
Not nine bridges last year. I would have to look at a map to verify that for sure, but I think we did four.
Four, okay, well, maybe it was the year before, but we have like ninety-nine bridges, right?
We have about a hundred and ninety-seven right now.
A hundred and ninety-seven, okay. So at what point are, you know, with them deteriorating and stuff, are we keeping up with the ones that are falling down?
Yeah, we're certainly on pace with a, with a normal replacement cycle. If you remember, four or five years ago, we had our bridge inspections, that was kind of a big shock to our system, where we had several bridges in a couple-of-years span that we had to replace just because they were in such bad shape. But since then, we've, we've gotten the really bad ones replaced, and we've moved on to more of a systematic approach, where we're replacing three to four every single year. The worst-conditioned ones are the, the bad ones that need to be replaced. And then we're also doing maintenance, regular heavy maintenance on three or four other bridges, to make sure that their, their life cycles last a lot longer than if we didn't do maintenance on them.
Well, thank you. I just would hate to see us slacking off on that and waiting for another day to keep those things in, in shape. I appreciate that.
I think we have a management system that helps us with the rating of those, and if I remember right, that sheet is pretty complex and long, and if you want a copy of it, I'm sure we could have DJ send it to you.
We, we look at over fifty parameters when we evaluate our, our bridge system, and, and it's, like you said, it's very complex and, and, and difficult to understand without a couple hours of, of talking about it.
Engineering tutoring.
Right, tutoring, there you go.
If I could add to that and maybe have you comment on it, you know, we hear reports nationally of, you know, our infrastructure, our bridges around the country, basically being in very serious or deteriorated condition, but how would you judge our county, maybe not fair to ask it quite that way, but where are we as far as the conditions of our bridges? Are we on, on a good track, or are we current with where we need to be?
I think it's safe to say, without pointing to some exact statistics, that we're better than most. I think that it's pretty safe to say that the American Society of Civil Engineers last week published the Infrastructure Report Card, rated infrastructure over the United States as a D-plus. I think in that report, they rated bridges as a C, and, and there's a lot of statistics that go into that, and, and they look at infrastructure across the United States. They do look at, look at it state-specific. South Dakota ranked pretty well, especially in bridges, relative to other states. Some states like Pennsylvania, where the infrastructure has been overlooked for a number of years, are a lot worse off than, than South Dakota. In, in South Dakota specifically, Minnehaw County has a lot more bridges than most other counties, and, and our bridges are in, I think, better shape than most other counties when I look at some of the statistics with the bridges. One of the, the statistics that we look at specifically is the sufficiency rating. That's kind of an overall zero to one hundred rating on the condition of a bridge, takes into a lot of, it takes into account a lot of the other statistics that we look at regarding the condition of the bridge, and it tries to summarize it into one number. Our federal sufficiency rating average over our system is better than most other counties.
So if I was driving over a bridge in Pennsylvania, I'd probably hold my breath, but I don't need to do that in South, in Minnehaw County.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other?
And one other comment, too. Commissioner Karski mentioned that we do have a lot of money left over this year that we're going to probably be carrying over into next year because of some projects that we're going to have to shift around with some sequencing. One of the things that we're looking at is, is a couple bridges that we had programmed in our long-range plan for a few years out. We're going to try to get those done this year yet, in the fall or, or late summer. So we are trying to move forward some projects that we're able to get done without impacting traffic too much.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports, Commissioner?
Kind of segue into another road issue, the UDC that several of us sit on. We needed to replace our chair. Sadly, we lost Steve Metley, who had served as the chair of that commission for quite a while, but the good news is that former Commissioner Carol Tweet has accepted that role, and so she will start serving as the, as the chair of that committee. So excited, excited that she's willing to step up and do that.
Thank you. Other reports? We'll go to new business, any new business? Any old business? If not, we do have a legal briefing for executive session, according to Kirsten, so.
I think a motion to adjourn into executive session for a legal briefing.
Second.
Second? All those in favor of going into exec session for legal briefing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Just forty-five minutes or so?
No.